We will call the Tuesday, October 11th, school committee meeting to order for the Norfolk Public Schools. We'll begin the meeting as we do the mission statement of the district. The Norfolk Public Schools offers a safe, joyful, and challenging learning environment that meets community partnerships. We provide an education that inspires life and learners in cultivating caring and productive citizens of our ever-changing world. Roll call, please.
Sarah Lord.
Lacey Sheldon.
Midora Janey.
Victoria Solomon.
Barry Chant.
Ingrid Liden.
Okay, moving on, our first portion of the evening is public comments. I don't know if anyone here is interested in making public comment. I'm seeing head shakes and avoided eye contact, so I'm going to say no. So we'll move on to the next section of our agenda, which is correspondence, of which we also have none. Correct, okay, correct. The calls, we are cooking. Onto my portion of the evening. We have two items on the school committee chair reports to go over tonight. These superintendent evaluation and some fundraiser approvals. So as everyone on the committee is aware, we went through the process of completing Dr. Allardyce's annual evaluation over the summer months, and I have aggregated the results of the evaluation and provided a finalized report that touches on all of the required categories that we need to be assessing with respect to Dr. Allardyce's performance. So we have two overall portions of it. The goals component, so there were three, four goals that are part of a two-year goal. Goal seems redundant, but a two-year goal for her goals. And we have been seeing progress and significant progress across the board as far as her achieving the goals that should be encompassed in that two-year timeframe. I'm trying to give a highlight reel of the evaluation just for the sake of some degree of brevity in the process. This is a public record, it's part of our minutes. If anybody wants to dig deep into it, they're more than welcome to do that. Next, we assess Dr. Allardyce on, I think it's four standards for overall performance. The first being instructional leadership, the second being management and operations, the third being family and community engagement, and the fourth being professional culture across the board. I think, as has been the case in the past years where I've been completing these as a committee member, the average ranking that each committee member gave Dr. Allardyce was exemplary. In particular, committee members' comments focused on the leadership and instructional leadership and the overall management and operational leadership that Dr. Allardyce provided to the district and the school community across the course of the pandemic last year as far as adapting to different DSC mandates and requirements and meeting meetings of students that had obviously significantly changed. Learning challenges and hybrid challenges and all of the challenges that everyone was facing. Supply chain challenges, budgeting challenges, all of those things were met in exemplary fashion by Dr. Allardyce. So each of those four standards, she was exemplary. And that, in a very brief nutshell, is the superintendent evaluation for this year. Each committee member completed an individual assessment that was an average lead to the overall assessment. But at this point, to wrap everything up, I think we need to vote to accept the aggregated evaluation that we collected from everybody's input. So we need a motion to accept the end-of-cycle summative evaluation report for Dr. Allardyce. So moved. Second. A second. Any further discussion from anyone? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion passes.
I would provide an update on the goals first, the second, the goals that are.
All right, interesting. Moving on, fundraiser approvals. Okay, so what we have on the agenda for this evening is a list of anticipated or possible fundraising activities that may be occurring within the district at both the HOD Day School. And there's kind of two portions to this. There's one for the HOD Day School, and then the last couple pages are for the Freeman Kennedy School. To vote as a committee to approve all of the anticipated and potential fundraising activities, which would include a few different things. So the food drive for the Norfolk Together Food Pantry that's done in conjunction with the Teachers Association, the PTO, the Hat and Mitten Tree during the holiday season, the Across America Raffle Baskets, the Jump Rope for Heart, Rally Against Cancer, supporting members of our school family, and school council fundraisers. Bennett Freeman, again, this is a highlight reel. Some of the fundraising activities are similar, but then you also have Art Somnia, the Susan Giving, the Sandy Foundation, and in-school, I'm sorry, I'm jumping onto something else. And then some other fundraisers for the Grade Six Promotion. That would include things like the Free Pizza Hut, no Red Sox tickets, Chipotle, I mean, things of that nature. I've probably gone into exhaustive detail, but this is an overview of the fundraising activities that we asked as a committee to approve. It doesn't necessarily mean no art, they will all happen, right?
Right, so per school committee policy, any fundraiser that is targeting families or students has to be approved by the Norfolk School Committee. Every year, the building principals submit anticipated fundraisers. Most of these are held every year. So they're, in the HOD Day, these are fundraisers that have been done year after year for a number of years. The only one that is new to this is school council. In the past, we have done fundraisers to support families in crisis, but the school council is looking to do something. We have a large population of new students that are English-language learners, and they wanted to offer a family night or something of that sort. So that would be the only thing new to HOD Day. Freeman Kennedy, again, is a pretty traditional fundraiser that have run since it's not anything dramatically new, except for the first one, Youth Across America. And that is a program that is run through a nonprofit organization, and they reached out to us because the school is named after Sergeant Kennedy. And they raise funds, people can purchase wreaths, and they go and they travel across the country, and they're laid at Armington Cemetery. So that is another, it involves some student programming as well. But that would be the only thing really new to Freeman Kennedy's. Most of these additional fundraisers, hey, are for the sixth grade promotion, and there's something dramatically new there. These are things that we've done in the past.
Okay, so looking for a motion to approve the anticipated and potential fundraising activities at the HOD and Freeman Kennedy Schools. So moved. And a second? Second. Any further discussion?
Is that a clarifying question?
Yes.
Who is the school council?
So that's a good question. So it's a statutory requirement that every principal have an advisory board as a school council. There's strict parameters around who's part of that. So you have to have parity between the school representation and parent representation. The parents are elected by ballot who serve on both school councils. So you have teachers, an administrator, and parents comprise. And the role of the council is to be advisory to the principal. They help develop the school improvement plans for each building. I can't give you the list of the current members, I could get that for you if you want. But the HOD had open spots last year, so they had to do an election, a ballot election, and a candidate tried a biography, and then they run an election.
And if anyone was ever interested in doing that, like that someone sent something out?
When there's open seats. So it's similar to school committee, you serve a certain number of years' term. And when the term's up, they recruit people that might be interested. And so HOD, to be honest, in the last couple of years, we've had trouble getting parents and people to be interested as everybody's been significantly impacted by what's going on with the pandemic and things. But they sent out information that there's openings under school council, a description. And if we have more parents interested than they have seats, then they are required to run an election.
Great. Okay, any further discussion on top of that? Further discussion? No. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. All right, moving on to Ingrid and the superintendent's report. Great.
The first thing we have, and I believe this was a topic that came up at our last school committee meeting. Vicki did a presentation for everyone on the training that we run for our, for the homeless drivers that, because we contract with homes. And so we do an annual bus driver training for our drivers that work for us through homes. We also contract out for our special education transportation. That's done through a contract with the Byco Collaborative, of which we are members. And the current vendor that provides that transportation is Vanpool. There's a question about what training Vanpool drivers go through. And so Dr. Tupper put together a information from Vanpool. Their training is actually very rigorous. It's more all-encompassing than the training that we provide. They do, there's a boot camp for new drivers that covers a range of different topics. They get more into supporting students with different types of needs and how their different abilities might require support in transportation. They review all of the similar topics that we do. They also provided information on, again, they call it the Boot Camp, is their new driver training. They also require recertification training, so every year they have to get additional training through the, through Vanpool to remain in their employ. They also provide some additional information about the requirements. So they have to pass the Coree and the SORI, and they do their background checks. Vanpool, because it's a contracted service, those drivers don't work for us, they work for Vanpool. But we have an extensive list of anybody that might be driving the vans. If they hire and interview drivers, they have to do the training, they have to provide us with their Coree information, so we keep that current and updated. We have substitute drivers also for Vanpool, all of which go through the same Coree process as well. So Dr. Tupper put together more information. Again, this is from Vanpool. Vanpool serves of the 17 districts in the collaborative, so 16. So there's only one district that opted out. There's a cost savings to contracting the service through Byco because they negotiated a contract with 16 member districts. So any questions about the Vanpool training? Or Vicki, was there anything that I left off that you wanted to?
No, I think it's just a question of what's how they're compared. And I think we just wanted to get more specific about exactly what Vanpool kind of offers for their drivers.
And I had a chance to talk to Dr. Tupper about this and add a couple of questions on it. And I kind of just let her know that I think that the Norfolk families who use the Vanpool would love this information because it's great.
I think that's a great point.
She was going to write it up in her, in her.
Communication that she sends out.
Yeah.
I think it's a really great point because that does serve a lot of our students, and it isn't covered by the training that we provide. But it is equally rigorous and comprehensive. So I think that's great. I'll make sure I circle back, and I'm sure Ann will send us something from this.
Yeah. Great.
Next, we have the feasibility study update. So as everybody knows, we are, we have put out specs and our soliciting proposals from outside firms to conduct the feasibility study to look at the potential expansion project for the Freeman Kennedy School. Our first round, we didn't receive any bids. The, after the closing, Matt had followed up with several companies that expressed initial interest. We were trying to find out what might be prohibiting people from bidding the project. There were a few things that, common patents that came out, one was the timeline. It's an aggressive short timeline for a turnaround of that project. And there were a couple of other things that we looked at in terms of the language of the proposal to kind of simplify things. We've made those changes, we've created greater flexibility on the timeline and the deliverables, and we rebid that. And Barry, do you want to update on where we are with that?
That's a pretty, that's a pretty good summary. The bids are due back Friday, this Friday, so hopefully we'll, we'll see some activity. And then we'll, we'll go through the evaluation process and hopefully be able to recommend a firm that the school committee, the next school committee meeting, which will be the 9th.
One other thing that I would say with this is that once we receive the bids, again, we'll go through the review process, hope to appoint this. I have also asked Matt to follow up with MSBA because we do still have an active application in. We don't know that we'll be selected for that project, so we move forward independently. But I think they had originally said that they thought they'd be making decisions in August, and we haven't heard anything yet. So at the next committee update, I'll be able to update the committee as to where they are in their timeline. I know a lot was pushed back because part of the evaluation of applications to MSBA involved sending an engineering team and team out to look at the site, look at the potential project. And with the pandemic, they were short-staffed, and they had trouble getting into, in access to some facilities. So I know that delayed them last year, but I will be able to tell you where we stand with that at our next meeting. Any other questions on the feasibility study? All right, Barry, it's from the budget update.
Thanks. So in your package, the document looks like this. So this is the actual year-end update for fiscal '22 that ended in June. So I'm going to skip right to page 10, which is a summary of where we ended up by some of the major categories that we tracked, the ESC major categories. We ended up not spending our entire budget. We returned $68,860 to the town. So having gone through this cycle, this is my first time in Norfolk, but many other times, oftentimes during the year, you get nervous as the expenses start to climb, and as you get closer to year-end and you get a better handle on the numbers, it often turns out that you do have money that you need to turn back to the town, which I always think is a good thing, a small amount of money. In this case, we spent 99.5% of our budget, which is pretty, pretty good. On the next page is a, is a chart that just shows the major categories, how we spent our budget. And as you can see, the big orange pie chart, a big orange slice of pie is instruction. And that's what should be the largest slice, so that's everything, including teachers and supplies and everything it takes to deliver instruction to the students. So that number usually is around 80-plus percent, and we're right around 81, which is great. And then the last page I wanted to go to is page 13. So we talked about our operating budget most often, but we all, we have other sources of funds that we spend each year. And in this case, the two major categories are grants and revolving funds. And in FY '22, we spent grant funds totaling about $565,000, most of which is our very large special education grant, and then some COVID grants that are no longer around for FY '23. But that's a big driver of our, of our grant funds. And on the revolving side, the bigger drivers of the revolving spending totaling about $796,000, the bigger drivers are our lunch program, the SAC program, and the preschool program. So you can see, in addition to our $13 million and change operating budget, we spent a whole lot more on an annual basis. And then last page is our gift activity, gift fund activity. And we took in in FY '22 about $25,000, and we spent about $21,000. So we have a nice balance in our gift fund. So that's kind of a very high-level summary. There's a lot more detail in this report. I'm happy to answer any questions or provide any other detail you might like.
One thing that I just wanted to add to what Barry says, when we look at where we had remaining balances, we did spend over 99% of our budget, so it's a small portion of the total. We were very concerned when we got into February, March, that we were, our special education costs were up way over budget. And we were concerned about having to access the stabilization fund from the town to offset that deficit. We did have a few things break in the other direction that led to the savings. So we had an open position for a technology integration specialist that we weren't able to end up filling until February, so that ended up unfilled. Also, as you probably know, we had great difficulty recruiting substitutes. So there were a lot of days that we needed subs that we didn't have them. And so that sub-line had some surplus funds in it that we didn't spend last year. So a few things broke in our favor, and in the end, we did not have to offset that special education gap with stabilization funds. And we ended up with, as Barry said, $68,000 to return. But those were unanticipated. You can see, we were under, we were over budget by almost $15,000 in special education. We also had some changes in special education outfits that began this year that generated some savings there with students moving, we did a district change that changed harm to our favor. So we, as a district, have always made the commitment to the town that if there is additional revenue at the end, that we would return that to the town as support of other expenses that they have. It has to be certified as free cash and kind of be applied to offset other budget areas in the future. It's always up to different committees, what position they want to take in that. Sometimes people use NDR funds to offset capital expenses or other kinds of district needs. But we've always had a partnership which has served the district well because the town has trust and faith in the transparency of our budget. And when we went with a higher request last year, it was supported by the town because of that. So that's where that stands. But again, direct questions for Barry, or I have to answer them? A better picture than we thought we'd be presenting tonight, so that's a good thing.
I had kind of forgotten how grim it was looking, what it was in last year. Yeah, that was a rough budget meeting. Okay, that we don't need to vote on. All right, the other thing we have tonight, we have Matt Haffner, our director of facilities here, who is going to share, particularly in our September meeting, do a facilities update. So he has a chance to share everything that you've ever wanted to know about what was done over the summer, which is our great opportunity when the buildings are empty to do some significant projects. We, I had asked Matt to wait to come to this meeting because we're also going to be talking about, originally, the feasibility study and the bid award. So while we delayed that because we're rebidding it, Matt is here anyway. So I have to give you my seat, or you need me to come up to the mic to give your report.
Thanks to Barry. So to make you guys, I've added about 400 different bullet points than what you have. I'm prepared to talk.
You need to learn how to speak like an auctioneer.
Deep, deep depth. As usual, we've been very busy. A lot of improvements over the Olive Day as far as energy efficiency upgrades. I can't wait to start seeing, this year, we finished doing all the lighting. We're almost done with putting motion sensors throughout the school. We insulated areas, we've added weather stripping, we've added controls to try to trim the heating system, energy usage. So it's been some huge upgrades that we've been able to use the Green Energy Committee grant funds for. So it's going to hopefully help offset the costs of the anticipated additional fuel costs and energy costs that we're dealing with now. Just did some other smaller projects as well, but the big projects were definitely the energy upgrades. At the Freeman, we, we worked with this tech team to relocate a lot of smart boards and did some selective painting in areas that were starting to look worn down. We've worked on automatic doors and did a lot of work on our rooftop units that are getting older at times. We replaced all the lights in the gym, they were constantly failing, and had an electrician come out constantly and change ballast and whatnot. It was not cost, it wasn't a good cost, I can't think of the word. So we, I got a grant and I got a huge rebate, and we went and we made the gym use a lot less electricity now. It has a nice bright light, and that's probably the longest, you know, that's always rented out in the wintertime, so it's many hours. So it should have some nice savings for the school. And we've been working on the feasibility study with Barry and Adora and Sarah and Ingrid. And so that's kind of the highlights. We've been having a lot of problems with the Olive Day with the plumbing. The building's old and it's all failing, so we've been constantly doing repairs over there. And having some of our hands-free equipment over here wear out as well. So we've been busy doing plumbing and we've just having equipment, just a basically wear out for age. This building is over 10 years old now, so things are starting to fail. So we've been keeping up with all our motions and our lighting and plumbing. And one thing that I really wanted to be careful about, and before the school year started, we had a locksmith come in and verify that every single exterior door, drugs properly, latches properly, and is, is in good working order. So I wanted to make sure for school security and just in light of things that have happened. So that was a thing that was a high priority for us.
And just on that, I think you also, it's not on here, but you also helped the tech team with the installation of new security cameras, I'd say?
We did, yeah.
Trish spoke at it at the last meeting, that was part of, I know people are very worried about school safety, and that was just part of the situation.
And what we do all the time, you guys don't see, it's called, we have this work order system and asset management system, it's called Facilities DoGE. We have prescribed maintenance schedule for all these different systems, whether it be in the kitchen, the lighting, HVAC. And we've, we've been down in employee for HVAC, but we've been keeping up from internally and having contractors help us out. But what we don't talk about is like the day-to-day operations that we do. It's just as we, when we implemented it about five years ago, we did a complete facilities assessments on all the town building, school buildings, and we have best practices, so we follow that. So we have daily, as far as checking that every piece of equipment has an inspection done, so we do all that as well.
And preventive, preventative maintenance for HVAC systems, filter changes, all of that scheduled so that we make sure it's done in a timely way.
And checking out exhaust fans, checking out the kitchen equipment, that's all part of our things that we do behind the scenes. It doesn't really make the list. Couple of my highlights. At the school, they did lose an HVAC employee, but it was a town employee, but we shared him with the school. We've had no turnover for staff, which is a great thing. A lot of my colleagues are having severe problems trying to get custodians to stay, and we have a great team. Very thrilled with them, all hanging around and being productive. One thing that's been a huge task for my team is moving the buildings around for COVID and undoing COVID procedures and furniture here, furniture there. It's a very time-consuming, this summer, we had a whole bunch of shipping containers that all of a sudden back in the schools. So we've been doing a lot of post-COVID, getting life back to normal. Well, it's not post, but getting, now that we're operating. And my staff, we still have them, we have them doing monthly training through our insurance carrier and do different safety and safety courses and education courses that apply to their, their work. And by doing that, it helps them work more efficiently and safer, and it also helps the town out for our insurance policy premiums. So that's all I was going to do tonight. So. The last, I've never met you, I'm Matt.
Nice to meet you.
I've had this whole place asleep.
I think you want a lot of details on barrels inside the underground septic. That's happy to.
Tried to tune it down a little bit, so. I'm more than happy to answer any questions you guys have as far as facilities.
I think one thing I just wanted to highlight, that Matt has worked with the Green, Green Community Grants out on the town side as well. And through that diligent efforts, I think we've had between this year and last year significant improvements to energy efficiency at both buildings. And as Matt said, all of the light replacements. And now the cost of electricity is carried out the town side, but the savings will be realized by the town for those energy upgrades. Security is always a priority. We spent a lot of time looking at the building and the areas that were might be vulnerable, and his team has done a great job of staying on top of that. Again, preventative maintenance, I think, you know, we have received recognition from Maya for that, for things being done in a timely way, for all of our systems. We have a preventative rug replacement, painting schedule, so the buildings stay in prime shape. And when we had the last project with MSBA, the roof project, they commented on the conditions that are in both of our buildings and how clean the schools were. So that's a tribute to Matt and his team. I think another thing that Matt's really committed to is that ongoing training and professional development. And that's made a dramatic difference in terms of the cost of insurance on the town side as well as the caliber of service we're seeing here in school. So they've done a fantastic job. Questions or comments for Matt?
Just a big thank you. I know you are 24/7 thinking about these school buildings.
And library buildings, Sarah.
And the town buildings too. More buildings than I could ever keep track of, and I know your team is amazing. And I think it's, it's a testament to you that you have had such a low turnover rate, and they're just, it's a fantastic team.
Well, it trickles down. You saw what she, on her evaluation, it's excellence in how everything's grown. So very proud to be part of the team and happy to have the team that I have.
And the team is unsure, thrilled not to be putting things in the storage and out of storage. So it was great to be able to bring. So it was great to be able to bring bookshelves and the furniture back in, which we had to take out to put distancing in places. It was a Herculean project this summer, cleaning everything that had been stored.
Not worried about doing anything on procurement wise. If anybody needs about 100,000 gowns, mobile gowns, let me know, I can fulfill your, I can even give you more.
Townwide Halloween costume.
Yeah, actually.
So, all right. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Thank you. All right. Staffing update. In September, we provided, and we still had at that time, several open positions that we were, were working to fill. Happy to say that we have hired some great new staff members. We have finally found a math specialist who will be taking over the position at Vicki to lead August, deputy health day. Vicki worked hard on interviewing and recruiting, but we're thrilled to have somebody with strong math content knowledge and who has served in the role of a coach for multiple years in prior districts. So we'll be welcoming Jennifer Byatt shortly. We're just, do you have a start date?
November 7.
November 7. So we're thrilled about that. We were able to hire several educational support personnel. We still have some special education assistant positions open, which we have filled. Kathleen Steck, I know at the last meeting I talked to about the two nurses that are sharing the HLJ nursing physician. And Kathy Steck, you appointed contingent upon her completing her certification. She was licensed RN, but she also had to apply for state licensure for, through DESI. That's been completed, so she is now officially appointed to her position. And we hired several people for the SAC program. We hired high school assistants that help support and supervision and programming for students. And we also had some openings in our cafeteria for free service. So we're really in good shape. As Matt mentioned, with facilities, a lot of districts are struggling to fill open positions this year. But we're in good shape. We have, with staff, still need two site coordinators. It's always challenging to hire those positions. They require significant background in training and solid education, but we have two more somebody who's going to come before school, leave for the day, and then come back at night. So it's, it's a tough position to fill and Tony is actively working on that. We still have the new position we added for a .5 math interventionist. We are, we have been advertising and recruiting. It's again, it's a tough to fill position and we continue to work on that. And then we're always looking for substitute teachers assistants and substitute nurses. But really in, in pretty good shape at this point. Any questions on staffing?
There's just a title on the job.
I know, I found it too. And it's under the math specialist.
It just leaked out because it's mine.
Yes, I, I saw that. I have, I'll have Roxanne correct that for the file. Thank you. The only other thing I had tonight, again, was the school nurse you appointed, her contingent upon completing her licensure. She has now completed that. So I would just like to have you confirm that we are now going to provide her with a formal employment contract. I don't think you need to re-vote it because you voted to appoint her and she has met those requirements. But Roxanne included a copy of the notice of contract, so you would have it. And we will go forward with finalizing that highest so that we can fully staff the permanent staff. She's currently acting as faculty of the cell, but we'll have permanent staff for nursing departments in both schools. Any questions on that?
No.
Fantastic. Excellent. Great. That's all I have for tonight. Committee reports, and I believe both of our committee members are not here.
So I think we have no.
Jen and Shannon. Policy did not need tonight though, so, because Jen and Shannon aren't here and Sarah, we need, with a subcommittee of two, we only need both members.
Oh, that's fine. Okay, so to close out our meeting, it looks like all we are going to need to do is approve a few sets of minutes?
Yeah, I think you have two because of the meeting on.
Yeah, the 13th and the 28th. Why don't we do the 28th first, since I think that will be a quick one to approve?
Surprise, it's more than a week.
I know. I am as well. But here we are. Let me get a motion to approve the meeting minutes for September 28th, 2022.
So moved.
Second. All right. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then similarly, once we've had a chance to, once we've let Sarah skim through this random hypothesis, we'll be looking for a motion to approve the Tuesday, September 13th, 2022, meeting minutes. So.
Second.
Any further discussion on that one? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then it, we need to just run down the next meeting date, which would be Wednes-, oh, we're getting into Wednesday. Okay. Wednesday, November 9th, 2022.
And that means I anticipate that we have our first budgets meeting. We typically start that process in November, so if that's okay with both Lisa and Dora, we can schedule that for immediately following.
It's fine with me. Are you good for the night, Sarah?
No, I can leave.
Okay. We have two other wonderful folks who can hopefully make it at that point. I know I'm available, so that's two, between myself and Lisa. I'm confident we can have three or four in attendance if you can't make it, so.
And Sarah, we can do the policy meeting a different night.
Okay. I could probably do policy, yeah, for about either a little earlier or.
Sure.
I just have a program seven to eight.
Yeah, that's fine. So I'll reach out to Shannon and we can schedule that.
Sounds good.
Okay. All we need at this point is a meeting to, or a meeting to adjourn the vote. We need a vote to adjourn the meeting, so looking for a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Okay.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is 37 minutes.